I'm just going to start.
Go ahead.
Mr. Martin.
Head or Appleton?
I'm going to call the meeting to order again, and then we'll follow the agenda, okay? Good morning. This is Linda Merkin. I hereby call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors, meeting in a special session. It's 10:06 a.m. We are originating from the administration building of the Story County Courthouse. We are also providing public access via conference call, thanks to our IT department's quick work. We did have one little glitch, and that's why we're starting five minutes early. I have a special note to the public on the agenda, and I will read it. Due to recommendations to limit gatherings if no more than 10 people in order to help slow the spread of the COVID-19 virus, public access to the meeting will be provided via conference call to listen in to the meeting. I will also just make a few comments right now. If you are looking at the agenda, there is a phone number here. That phone number is probably for today only. We're going to have another service, I think, soon. So if you ever are calling into either a regular session or a special session of the Board of Supervisors, please check the specific agenda online to make sure you're calling into the correct phone number. And then there's an access code prompt. And we ask that anybody who is on the call, if possible, you mute your phone, so that if you're working, you know, and I understand you're doing something, we don't get keyboard strokes and that kind of stuff, you know, from there. We do have a public comment section on the end of our agenda for today. And we would ask that we're going to do this meeting and all our electronic meetings, as we always do, according to parliamentary procedure, and follow our agenda. So it's not like a normal conference call where everybody can talk whenever they want to talk about something. We're doing this because we have some things that we need to work on urgently today. So we do have public comment at the end of our agenda. We'd ask that you hold any comments to that. We will have our regular board meetings every Tuesday during this special time, I guess, as we call it. I don't know exactly what to call it during this time when we're trying to help deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. We will have a special meeting every Friday, as well as our regular meeting. And we will post agendas as early as we can. That's just some things I wanted to say to start out, because we are doing this meeting differently. I would entertain, at this point, a motion to adopt today's agenda with the request that we consider moving Item 8 up after Item 4, and any other changes.
So moved. Okay. I'll second and make note that we've already taken care of probably Items 3 and 4 there, with your statement.
I'm going to just refer to the code sections.
Okay.
Any further comment? All in favor? Oh, Hedens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Sorry, sometimes you go to old habits. And there's Number 3 on your statement of necessity of special meeting per Code Section 21.4.2b. Basically, we did give 24-hour notice of this meeting, but because we're still working on some technical things, we didn't get our -- some of the things we're going to consider today on the agenda. They will be in future meetings. We will have some thorough discussion of what we will be talking about, though. So that's why I wanted to say there was a necessity of special meeting. And because of that, we didn't do all the normal procedures we normally do. It's not required by code that we attach. Items we'll be considering to our agenda, but we do that out of wanting the public to know as much information as possible. Item 4, then, saving explaining why a meeting in person is impossible or impractical. Again, it's trying to slow the spread of COVID-19. We are adhering to the guidelines of having no more than 10 people in a meeting. And we have exactly 10 people now, and a few people, and thank you for doing so. When they saw that, went away and joined us by conference call. And I don't know if we have any members of the public on, but if we do, we appreciate your attendance by electronic means or by telephone today. So that's why we're doing this meeting as we are now. It is unwise and impractical to have a meeting in person with as many people as might want to come, as we just saw. So next, is there anything else before we go into Item 8 discussion that we should say today just about the nature of our meeting? Then I would ask Noel McClatchy if she would come to the microphone and discuss the temporary employment policy and procedure for COVID-19 that she has proposed. Thank you for all your hard work on getting this done so quickly. We appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you see, Ethan, Alyssa, and myself worked on the temporary employment practice and policies in response to COVID-19. We did have a discussion earlier this morning, and I do have a few recommendations on identification and isolation of employees with COVID symptoms. When Ethan, Alyssa, and I spoke yesterday, they were recommending employees, if they had symptoms, to remove themselves from employment for at least 24 hours after the use of fever-reducing or other symptom-altering medications. Since this was drafted, there was a change in recommendation. And so we would like to recommend changing that to 72 hours.
So Noel, you're referring to, under the paragraph, this is paid leave for COVID-19 isolation testing and/or recovery?
Correct. And actually, there's an area there, and then the paragraph right before that, where it says, "Story County will follow the protocol set forth by the Iowa Department of Public Health."
Oh, so it's in two different areas?
Correct. Thank you.
So if I might just make notation that, as I understand this, that people who are listening were not able to access this online, correct? So we're having a discussion that some people have not read?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. To clarify that.
Certainly.
Pardon? So it's okay. I just want it, for the record, and for people who are on the phone who are going, "What is she talking about?"
Sure.
Are there other questions? Are there other things that you would -- because this is evolving so quickly.
Right, right.
Are there other things that maybe you know more that we should change in this before?
We also discussed, under caring for family members, whether that COVID-19 80 hours would be utilized for that portion. We did, Alyssa and I did some more research, and it could be used. But it currently states that for -- so for the people that are on the conference call and don't have this right in front of them, this is leave for individuals that may need to care for family members, such as kids who are out of school or if daycares are closed. Currently, how we have it listed, how we have it written is, leave will be granted, and they can use any form of paid leave they would like during this time, including vacation, comp time, health-related, and/or sick leave. From what we have read currently, they are saying that it could be used for that. However, it would be at a lower rate, is what the interpretation currently is. It'd be 2/3 of the individual's salary.
I have a feeling we might have the same question.
You ask yours first.
Yeah, so could you clarify when you're saying the less? I mean, what the difference is? Because it sounds like you're talking about a current policy, what could be used, and then what could be followed under the COVID --
COVID-19.
The federal legislation.
Yes. So with the Family Medical Leave Act, this is something that just came out yesterday. There is an area in there that talks about leave for use of -- for childcare if those are closed or schools are closed. And what that reads currently is, "The law amends the Family Medical Leave Act of 1993 by allowing workers under employment parameters mentioned above up to 10 weeks of paid family leave to care for a child of an employee if the child's school or place of care has been closed or childcare provider is unavailable due to a public health emergency, such as COVID-19." And then it states that -- let me find it here. It would be paid at 2/3 of their current salary up to -- sorry.
$200 a day.
$200, yeah.
Or a week. A day or a week?
Paid leave exceed $200 per day and $10,000 in aggregate. So 2/3 of an employee's regular rate of pay.
And is this based on the version from the House? Because I know there -- I believe there are some changes. And I think they've changed some within this particular area. So are you looking at those potential changes?
Yes.
As well? So that this is something that may -- the letters there may change?
Correct, yes. And Alyssa and I talked about that. So our recommendation is to continue with how we have it here currently. We will continue to stay updated on this. And if there's any changes, we would bring that directly to the board.
And I would just say that even if we adopt this policy -- I mean, we need to adopt a policy. We can't predict. You're still looking at this. We understand that we're going to, as a unit of government particularly, we're going to follow the law. So we might have to, at some point, okay, we'll catch this up when we can. But if the law supersedes or further defines anything in this policy, my sense is, we follow the law, and we notify people that here's an update, and we will get to revising our policy as we can get to revising our policy. Does that, just as a general operating principle, make some sense here?
I agree.
And I might have. One of my suggested changes might address that.
Okay. Can you hold it till you know it's done?
Yes, I can.
And then I'm curious when you hear it.
Sure. And then the final change that we would recommend is under telework. The last sentence says, "Authorization for VPN access will only be granted by department head or elected official." We would like to add, "And allocate it as determined by Board of Supervisors." We have a limited supply of VPN access available. So when we're looking countywide, we feel that that's important to add.
So we have -- I'm hearing just two changes that you're recommending. Where the 24 hours is twice, change that to 72 hours. And the phrase you just said, "And allocate it as approved by the Board of Supervisors," to the telework.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm going to ask Laura's now. What are you thinking of in terms of?
Yes, and I'll start with addressing that issue about, you know, as the law changes. In the document, there's a section called, "Story County Infection Control Practices." And underneath there, and it says, "We'll implement the following guidelines." And then there are several bullet points. And the final bullet point says, "Other employment-related actions as we have recommended by federal or state authorized." I think it really means by authorities at this time.
I'm showing you, Lauren.
So let's see. I am on page 2.
Top of, yeah, top of page 2.
Yeah, kind of. It's bottom for me, but -- oh, it's 3. Sorry, top of page 3, okay? Because I've got it on Pedia. Okay. So it's the last bullet point, and it says, "Other employment action -- related actions as, and we have right now, recommended by federal or state authorities." And then it goes out, the whole Department of Homeland Security, Emergency Management, et cetera, OSHA, okay? I would like to recommend that we -- I would like to suggest that we take out "recommended" and substitute "required." It addresses it in two ways, I think. First of all, is it makes note about what you were talking about, Linda and Noel, is right? If they require it, we're changing it, okay? And then the other thing is, is there may be some recommendations that come out that we're not interested in, just as a recommendation. So I like "required" instead.
I have a -- I just have clarification on this. Does OSHA only recommend, or do they require? We could have recommendations from OSHA. We could have requirements from OSHA, correct?
Correct.
We could have recommend, and I think DPH, the same thing. So I think we have to just -- and if it's executive action, either the president or the governor, you know, if it's an executive action, that's required. So I think we need to sift through between recommendations and requirements. And Ethan, do you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, I agree.
Go to the table, please.
Could we set up at that table over there one of our portable mics, so we can keep distance?
There's a portable mic right there. They can grab.
You can move.
It's at the other end of the table.
Yeah. You can take the press table, Ethan.
The press, yes, thank you. I agree with that. My understanding is, OSHA issues regulations. And they, I don't know if they issue recommendations, but I think they're regs. And I think this is a reasonable change, in saying, "We'll do what's required." And then it gives the flexibility to adopt recommendations. Although I think, at this point, we'd probably be in a position of wanting to even follow recommendations, because we're following the 10-person recommendation. We're following 72-hour recommendation. Those types of things.
Yes, so that would lead into a question for either you, Ethan, or Noel. Would we almost want to have another bullet, then? So saying something that we would follow the requirements? But, you know, like, the 10-person is a recommendation. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, you go back. I'd like to actually then move us of staying in that same section, "Story County Infection Control Practices." And it starts out saying, "Story County will implement, will implement the following guidelines." Which, there's a little bit of a non sequitur there, right? We will implement, but we're -- they're guidelines. So that's why I'm concerned that we could get so many guidelines, and we don't want to adopt them all. Which is hence then my "recommended" or "required," okay? And I also have another change in there, but it's not addressing this name.
Would you like to change "guidelines" to "practices"?
Yes. And then, so if we're keeping "will implement," then I do have a separate edit on another bullet point there. But we're locking ourselves in with a "will implement" up there at the top.
Well, then what we could do is just strike that last bullet point and do it all together.
Okay.
So then what you're implementing is what is in the first six bullet points. And then looking to the end, this document is clearly an attempt to address several concerns, but it's also a work in progress. You have this understanding in the last paragraph that the Board of Supervisors reserves the right to amend or alter this as situations develop. And so, yeah, if we need to come back again to the Board with newer recommendations or newer requirements, I think that's anticipated in this document.
And if it's really urgent, and we could do that through a simple motion rather than having a new document placed in front of us that might take some time to put together?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I kind of see this, too, as the circumstance, the unusual circumstance that we're under, that this particular policy is actually going to be more like a living policy. It's going to be changing because of how rapidly things are changing with COVID-19.
Noel, are you comfortable with taking out that final bullet?
Yes.
It might just make it easier for us. And I think we're going to be doing a lot of that. And we're already doing a lot of it, saying, "Please do this, please do that." And some of that's just standard operating procedures. We don't, you know, the facilities management doesn't have to come to us to decide to take the lids off the trashcans, as an example.
Right.
You got it.
So staying in that section, my next change is actually an addition, moving up to bullet point number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It says, "We will implement." And then it says, "Utilize electronic means to conduct public meetings." I think we need to clarify in there, unless conducting a legally-required public hearing. Because we have to let the public into a public hearing. We can't say, "Sorry, you can't attend," or "You have to attend via a phone," or "You have to attend via a computer." So that still keeps our intent there. I mean, you know, we want to try and use our electronic means. But public hearings are required to have the public there, so.
So which -- I'm sorry.
I just add on. So it'd be, "Utilize electronic means to conduct public meetings, unless conducting a legally-required public hearing." And legally-required is probably redundant. So how about a required public hearing?
Code-required.
That works, too? Okay.
Then we're specifically looking at the Iowa code.
Okay.
Is that okay with you, Ethan?
That's perfect, yeah. I think the Board has already pushed back some of the ordinance change, or the subject ordinance stuff, back because of the public hearing requirement. So, yeah, I mean, this is a good way to make sure what we say matches what we're doing.
And I would assume, if we have a true emergency that we are responding to, and I can't think of a true emergency that would require a public hearing, but I would assume that if there were just no other way, and we were protecting life, you know, doing something we just absolutely had to do, there was no question that we'd have you on the phone to say, "How do we do this?"
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So those were my two actual suggested changes, okay? Did have a couple of questions, but I'll defer to you guys and see if you've got questions you want brought up before I ask about questions. Your policy, how's it?
No, my question actually was pretty much answered when I asked if you were using the new amended version. And I brought that up because I was on the NACO conference call last night, and that was something they emphasized, was making sure you looked at that amended version, because there had been some changes. And I believe they were also going to put out, like, some guideline information as well. But things are just, as they say, are ever-evolving, too.
Anything else?
Yeah. Linda, or Laura's had a question.
I do, okay. So going to the next section, which would also, which is right below the bullet points.
What is the title?
Identification and Isolation of Employees with COVID-19 Symptoms. And in the middle of the first paragraph, we say, "Employees or individuals within any Story County work sites exhibiting symptoms, including but not limited to those identified as being associated with COVID-19, must be immediately isolated from others at the work site." So my question is, and is -- I'm known for my coughing sometimes, okay? Another symptom is shortness of breath. And I suspect, as more of us can't go to the gym, we may, some of us might become more short of breath, go upstairs or whatever. So how -- I'm a little concerned about how we end up interpreting this. You know, so I know fever is probably a clearer one. But if I get into a coughing fit, all right? Or someone gets short of breath, you know, what do we do? Do we immediately have to isolate them and then, from others at the work site, and for how long?
Well, I think when reading this paragraph, I want to read the sentence before that as well. And that references the information posted in the job sites, work sites, about COVID-19. And that's to distribute to all employees. And then these are going to be largely discretionary, common sense. This is a best practice. This is what we intend to do. But there's no way to act on every potential cough, sneeze, sniffle today or in a policy. This is general guidance. I think if somebody feels sick, they know they're sick, they should go home, isolate themselves, and then contact Human Resources and Noel and Alyssa will work.
Okay. I just wanted to make, because it reads very black and white. Okay?
Any other questions or comments?
No, I just think, as things go along, too, there's probably going to be refining.
Right.
You know?
So I'm going to go through, again, where I see the changes that we're doing. And I'm not going to refer to page numbers. I'll try to refer to section headings, since it depends on if you have printed or you're looking at it. Under "Story County Infection Control Practices" section, substituting the word "practices" for "guidelines" in the first sentence. In the fifth bullet, which starts utilizing electronic means to conduct public hearings, unless conducting a code, and then we capital C, the code of Iowa, required public hearing. Then deleting the next, the final bullet in that section. In the section on Identification and Isolation of Employees with Symptoms, change in the second paragraph, 24 hours to 72. In paid leave for COVID-19 isolation testing and a recovery, then. Near the bottom of that, there's another 24 hours. Change that to 92.
72.
72, I'm sorry. Thank you. And then, under telework, the final sentence, "Add and allocate as approved by the Board of Supervisors." Did anybody have any other changes?
No, I did just have a clarification on, I know we talked about changing the guidelines to practices under the Story County Infection Control Practices. Was that, were we changing from guidelines to practices based on that last paragraph? But now we've taken out that last paragraph? I just want to make sure that, you know, are we already practicing these things? Or are we going by certain guidelines? I'm just, clarification from our conversation.
Since I suggested it, can I tell you what I had in mind? Since I suggested it, can I tell you what I had in mind and see if it works? To me, a guideline is, here's something to consider. If we say, "These are the practices that we will implement," we're saying, "This is what we're going to do." If there's a better word than practices, I mean, I think this, we're not just telling staff, "Here's some things to think about," we're saying, "This is what we want you to do as a practice."
Okay, okay. That's fine.
Does that work?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions before we vote? And I think Shelley, you've, and Noel, you've got all the changes then that, that we went through, and we're in agreement, those are the changes that we would want. I would entertain a motion to approve the temporary employment practices and policies in response to the novel coronavirus or COVID ID pandemic as discussed.
I will move that we adopt the temporary employment practices and policies in response to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic as presented in revision number one, and the changes get announced at the board table.
Good.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Olson.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Again, thank you very much, Noel, Ethan, I know Alyssa helped with this considerably, so thank you, Alyssa, whether or not you're on the phone, we'll thank you in person, we'll see you soon, but we also did, once the changes are made, I would ask, with consent of the other supervisors, that we direct Noel to send it out to all employees, because there may be people listening in who didn't have the advantage of looking at this, and we don't, we want to make sure people have this now as soon as possible. So, is that all right, everybody?
Sounds good.
That sounds good. My one question is, um, do you need to qualify, does she need to kind of requalify that there may be some additional changes based on, you know, certain areas, or do you not necessarily? I know it's kind of written in the last page of the, of the policy here, that there may be some changes, but that might be something you want to just emphasize as well.
I think that's a good idea, because people are going to be listening to the news and know that, "Well, I just heard this might happen, I just heard that might happen, what about that?" So I think that'd be an excellent way to, in a, in your email, get, get the heart of our conversation about that in there.
The other thing that did come up then, just this morning, when we kind of took our first look at this, is, and when Alyssa was on the phone, is making mention that there will need to be a memorandum of understanding with two of the five units. Do not know which two they are, but she will follow up on that. Okay, so you might want to mention that in there too, so somebody in one of those units doesn't understand.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have updates on COVID-19 from staff. Are there any staff present who need to make an update that they would want the supervisors to know about right now?
Would that maybe be some staff that might be online?
I was thinking about that. There are also staff online, can, are there staff who are online? Could you please tell me who's, who's on the call? If you want to say anything, you don't have to. Anybody on the call want to make a quick update? Staff, wise?
Probably on mute, maybe.
This is Ted Rassason, Treasurer.
Yes.
Last night, our governor did issue a proclamation that will postpone the penalty for late property taxes until April 16th. So we do expect payments to slow down. Otherwise, I don't have any other updates.
Ted, does that also include, or did you do anything about the vehicle registrations as well?
Vehicle registrations were handled in a proclamation earlier this week that allowed anyone with a, it basically gave a 60-day extension to anyone whose vehicle, vehicle registration expired after March 16th.
Okay.
And I think drivers licensed for the same 60-day extension if they expired after March 16th.
Okay, thank you. I do recall that, I did see that, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any other staff on the call, Department heads or elected officials who have any other announcements? If not, then I'm going to move on to any comments from the members of the Board of Supervisors.
So I actually would like an update from some specific staff. So, and I came in and talked to Sandra about this yesterday, Sandra's in the room with us, or across, possibly from, if LeAnn Harder's on the phone, but I'd like to get an update on communications. As far as, in addition to just sending out press releases and using social media, I'd like to get an update on what other forms of outreach we have been doing, and have we made, have we made any attempts to contact media like newspapers, to run paid ads saying, "Hey, the Agnew Building's closed," or to purchase ads, paid media, once again, on radio. So have we done that? And then Ted, I'm going to also invite you to comment, because in the past, I know the Treasurer's Office has always purchased some advertising, and so I'd just like to know, have we begun that outreach yet? I see Sandra moving to the mic.
So this is Ted Rassason, Treasurer. I had ads scheduled to run on our Ames radio station, 1430 KISI and 1051, I can't remember the call letters right now. They did just email me this morning about updating some things on my ads. I have to get back to them on how I want to run those. I'm a little hesitant to run those, because the governor's proclamation basically said that the late fee of property taxes are suspended through the duration of this proclamation, and then later in the proclamation, it said it goes into effect immediately, and it expires on April 16th. That does not mean that she could not issue an extension to that proclamation, or issue a different proclamation, so I am not positive how I will approach those ads now. Those ads were all set to run beginning, I think, next Tuesday until the last day of the month. So I guess the update is, we are addressing them, we have to have some discussions within the department before we determine how we are going to make those changes.
I think that's something to think about, is, is information is going so quickly, that we could place an ad in the paper, and it's like three days ahead of time, here's what we want you to say, and then all of a sudden, you know, we've got a, something new comes up. And I don't know how to answer that, but I'm just saying, I, I think that's a real life example of what can happen to us.
So, yes, I'm going to let Sandra's update us then too, and then maybe I can clarify that direction.
Um, we actually have not made any changes since our conversation, Laura's, but LeAnn may be on the phone. I shared the information with her and your concerns about communication. We've been following our practices, what we've been doing in the past, posting online, posting on Facebook. There are some postings about building closures in the building and so forth. We have not taken out an ad in the paper, although we discussed that being a good idea, and maybe something we want to consider in the future.
Let's put that on Tuesday's agenda, if you need a direction for expenditure of monies from the Board of Supervisors, if that's a concern, but everybody keeps on pointing out over and over again that this is not business as usual, okay? And I, 15 minutes after we closed the building, I walked out the front door, there were four people standing there, two went away, one was a gentleman in his 50s who said, "I don't have a computer," and the other one was a gentleman that I will estimate was in his 90s. He used two canes to walk, and he'd come to pay his property taxes. He doesn't listen to the radio, I mean, he may have listened to the radio, he does not have a computer, he's not on social media, and therefore, a general ad that we could place today, Linda addressed to you, that would run, and unfortunately, I think we've missed the deadlines for next week's weekly papers again, but a simple ad saying, "The, our facilities are closed to the public." And if we need to wait till next Tuesday, that's unfortunate, I think the publication deadline for the weeklies is Tuesday, but I guess if we've got something ready to go, and the board can approve expenditure on it. But we need to realize that not all of our citizens communicate, use social, using social media.
Where would you put the ad? Ames Tribune?
The Tribune, and the Tri-County Times, and Nevada Journal, and the Story City Herald. It'd be one simple ad, but it would run to let people know until further notice we're closed, so please call first if you have some business to take care of. Ted would be separating what he does with his deadlines.
The Tribune has used the press release and, and did one story, and I understand that, it's one story and people can miss it, but it was pretty prominent, and it said that we were closing our buildings to the public. So maybe, you know.
It takes seven times, when you hear or read something, this is per ad marketing research, that is very well established, so it takes seven times to get a message in. Also, yes, the assumption that a, what's called earned media, that one time, that everybody will catch it or get it right, is not. I'm sorry, I am going to probably point out that I spent 20 years in the, in the news business, the communications business, and I'm saying that we're not doing all that we can if we don't do this.
What's, you're saying that you want to put it on me, on the Tuesday agenda for discussion and direction to staff?
If, if we need to do that, since staff has not acted yet, staff actually has $3,000 in, we have a line item in our budget, our fiscal year 20 budget, that we haven't spent for advertisement and publications. And that's, the reason it's in there is that when we originally did the budget, we estimated we would be doing our story in The Sun four times a year, but we renegotiated that contract. So we have $3,000 that we don't even need to make a budget amendment on or anything that's available for staff. If staff is hesitant to do this without an official okay from the supervisors, and not willing, or not comfortable acting within their parameter of their, of the job, then that's why I'd say we could put it on Tuesday and then just clear up any confusion.
Why don't we have staff bring us some recommendations on Tuesday?
I think that makes perfect sense, and staff is certainly not hesitant to act, and has been trying to provide as much information as possible to the public. It's certainly not staff's intent to not notify the public of things that we're doing during this rapidly changing situation. And I also wanted to point out that when any change is made, there are going to be hiccups along the way.
Mm-hmm.
That's just kind of the normal way things go, and there may be a person or two that will continue to show up even after ads have been placed, because they didn't get the information. But we will continue to try and share that as widely as possible.
Okay, thank you.
So if, can I summarize direction from this discussion? Or do you want to say anything more before?
I think you can help with my question, so.
So if we direct staff now to bring us recommendations regarding further notices to the public about changes in county operations, with a particular emphasis on, I'm just going to add this, because I think that's what you're getting to, with a particular emphasis on audiences we might not already have been reaching. And you made a good point about repetition of the message, but I think we know that a lot of people use websites, not everybody, so thinking about, thinking about how we could reach out, whether it's, whether it's through use of budgeted funds, or use of other things that don't cost, don't cost much.
The other question I have too, is, as you're looking at those, excuse me, print medias, I don't think I heard, Laura's, that you say The Sun, and I think The Sun goes out to everyone.
Yes, it does.
In the county.
It does, yes.
So is it better to look at the individual, you know, newspapers, or, I'm, I'm not saying your name, I'm just saying, or is it, is that in addition, or, I think just some of that, if, if information is, is, would be a good thing to have as well?
I neglected to mention them, and that's my fault, because they're all owned by the same media outlet.
Right.
So the buy would be across the five publications that now Gannett owns and distributes. Okay, that's my suggestion. The other thing I'd like to add in that direction, to staff to bring to us, could you pre, please pre-prepare, anticipating that there would be some newspaper buys, that there be a preparation of an ad that would go in, because once again, the weeklies and The Sun have publication deadlines, and so we're already a week behind, so if we're going to get our message out as soon as possible to people, we need to anticipate. So if they've at least done some work in advance, then when we take a look at the suggestions you're bringing us, they might be ready to leave right away, and then place that.
We can do that and have a draft ad for you to look at, if that is what you're looking for.
Great.
I think so, and I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at the clock right now, I'm cognizant of time, it's probably going to be, you know, noon Fridays, we're, and we got, I know, I know you've got a whole, something we've already put on your schedule to do all day Monday, I'm just saying, I understand the, I understand the urgency, but I'm also saying, I know how busy people are right now. So I think we need to prioritize. So I would just suggest, you get one good first priority thing to go, and look at people who I haven't reached so far, and do that, not a, not a full plan right now.
So are you suggesting that they put off, because there was one newspaper article, or you got, I'm not, no, I'm not.
No, I'm not, I'm saying, there's only so many hours of work that can be done, and rather than leave here thinking, "We're asking for a whole communications plan for this whole thing."
Oh, got it, okay.
A first step, a first step, and maybe it's an ad, the, how can we, how can we quickly reach people who aren't, we're not reaching through the website? And don't feel, I'm just saying, bring us, bring us one thing.
I'm going to counter that, okay? And here's why, okay? So when I say, "Bring us one thing," the newspapers, I believe, still will offer to build the ad. If all you do is send them the text, "We're closed," as of last afternoon, newspapers still offer to build ads. Deal with the radio station, and I think the other thing that we talked about is that if in fact a phoner were just booked, I believe it takes about three minutes to book a phoner by calling over to KSI, it's called a phoner, and someone, whether it be our PIO, could get on next week or whatever, and then, the radio station will record that phoner, in addition to it being live in the morning, and they can cut out, and they can make a commercial out of that.
They can, they can get a nice six to second spot.
Right, and so I don't see this as being that huge burden, and, but I do see it as a high priority, we've got to reach all our citizens.
Couple ideas there to work with and do as quickly, and simply as you can, help get the message out, is that? Okay.
Yes, we'll work on it.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Okay, then, I'm going to go on to six, unless there's any Department heads and elected officials on the phone who have thought of something, they could very briefly report that they think is important to report now. Hearing nobody move to the mic, I'll say it that way, we'll go on to item six. And I don't know that we have any other items brought before the board today with requests for immediate action, do we? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll move on to item seven, review the authority of the Board of Supervisors individually and collectively as a body.
So I placed this on the agenda because we are in unusual, unique times, never happened before, and the county's never activated its COOCOG before, and that's led to confusion, I think, coupled with some, a couple of new supervisors, coupled with a couple of new Department, or people who are in somewhat management positions, and it's, it's created some confusion about really what are the limitations of individual supervisors to give direction, what is their, under the COOCOG, what are our legal, what, how do we get our legal authority? So I would like for Ethan Anderson to discuss briefly 301 and 302, and Ethan and I have it in front of me, if you want to read, they're both like one sentence, that give us our authority and say how we operate. And then I'd like to clarify about if any one of us is, or the chair has given special authorities in the section. I'd like to move on to the COOCOG and see, I've been through it, I don't see anywhere where that changes the state law. I'd like to have you quickly give us a feedback on consensus up here at the table, and how that might work, as opposed to having put items on the agendas for things like forming work committees, or for, say, making an offer to an employee about a hotel room, or something like that. And then, to discuss the individual, the separation of liaison assignments, that I think we, the board, would like to look at, splitting up areas about what we're each going to take on, some internal liaison assignments. So I'll call up my section of the code, unless you've got 301 or 302 with you.
No, I mean, if you want to read those, if you want to read those sections, go, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, sorry, okay, there it is.
You didn't bring copies for us.
Well, it's pretty easily found online, sorry, so I downloaded.
I didn't know we were going to be discussing it.
Well, that's kind of, that's, am I correct, Ethan, that we get our authority from those two sections, and it says clearly what authority we have and how we are to exercise it?
Yes, my, my understanding, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, 331, 301 talks about board supervisors acting as an entity, and 302, I believe, talks about county legislation.
Yes.
And the way the board acts through amendment, motion, ordinance, resolution. I would just say, maybe, before we begin discussion, that this is an unprecedented situation we're in. Supervisor Haddens has said that's the evolving situation. I've been involved closely with the supervisors in the last week, week and a half, and I would report and state for the record that all supervisors have been very conscientious of the limits of their authority for wanting to do things the right way. And in my experience, interaction so far, I don't see anything that's given me any concern. Again, it's a useful reminder for the board that these, these decisions that are made by the board have to be made as an entity. Any decision made outside of this room, it's not binding, it's simple as that. Any decision made outside of this room, it's not binding, as simple as that. I think we're doing a good job following the open meetings laws. You know, there's situations where we're gathering information, there's ministerial functions, I've been involved with a little bit with Linda. These are not board actions, and she has not been directing employees, that's been my experience in the meetings I've been involved in. So as a reminder, yes, you are one board, the three of you are one. It's an entity. You have to act together, you have to pay attention and follow open meetings requirements. Now, I say that this is an evolving situation, an unprecedented situation, because Matt Corry just handed me a press release from the governor's office that shall be suspending the requirements of 21.8 IO Code. So this is, as we discussed, public hearings, the governor's now said you can have a public hearing by electronic means. And she waves the provisions of the code and suspends the provisions that prevent that from happening. So this is evolving. And I think, yes, it's a good reminder, let's, let's do the business of the county in an open and transparent way, let's abide by open meetings, let's remember the limits of our authority as board entity. And I think with that, we can, we can move on and keep doing the business of the county with those reminders in place. And I don't think it'd be productive today to go through individual accounts or concerns. I'd be happy to have those discussions with the county attorney and with the individual board members present, and I'd be happy to have a closed session discussing.
My concern in part here is, is that maybe the staff, and why I felt it was important for this to come to the board, is I'm not sure the staff necessarily understands that. So that is why, wouldn't you say, to move on here? I would like to read 331, 301.2, okay? A power of a county is vested in the board, and a duty of a county shall be performed by or under the direction of the board. Correct, the board being the three people. All right. So, so I'm concerned that staff may be bringing to one person, it could be, any one person, will be bringing scenarios to one person, and that person may just make us automatically offer a solution that that person doesn't have the authority to make because the board would have to make that. So I'm going to go to county legislation, 331, 302. The board shall exercise a power or perform a duty only by the passage of a motion, a resolution, an amendment, and an ordinance. Which I said I want to talk about consensus now, okay? Because I have some concern about, in addition to, to only one of us making an offer to an employee or, or forming a work committee, okay? And I gave those two examples, but I would just say, okay, we're going to move on from that. But then I have a concern about what we even do via consensus, since it's not binding there. So as I mentioned, we are interested in creating some areas, liaison assignments internally to keep watch over some specific areas and to take the lead, so that we are spreading the, we are spreading workload, and then we can share what we've learned, right? And so, but would we, should we, next Tuesday, bring a list for the three of us about which areas we're going to take the lead in, rather than rely upon consensus?
I think that'd be potentially, yes, an internal discussion of the board that needs to happen in open meeting at two a day. But again, I think as a reminder to the board and to county employees, the board is the only entity that can take action. And if you're referred to liaison assignments and, and open meetings, if they're gathering information from staff, or they're on a liaison assignment where they're gathering information, it's not an open meeting, it's a ministerial function, they're not, they're not, there's not a form of the board present, they're not discussing matters of the public policy, it's not an open meeting. That's what happens here and now, in any future meeting of this board.
What happens if, because I, I understand that, yeah, so you're going, you're gathering information from the staff, okay? But if we were, then let's talk about, then that information's gathered, okay? The information needs to be shared and discussed. Can the sharing occur before the board meeting, or do we have to come back to share information with each other? Only to share the information?
So I mean, those conversations, that sharing information, that get very close to crossing the line, what becomes discussion or deliberation, affecting matters of your public policy decision making. So I would caution against that and just remind each, each of you to be aware of it. If all of a sudden this appears to be discussion or deliberation, I'd expect you to immediately stop that and say, we got to stop this, and save this for the meeting.
Can I follow up on that, just because I have some concern? Because if we can't share information as to things we know or what we're doing, we have a possibility, there's a real possibility that we can be working inefficiently, working across purposes, and sending conflicting messages. We are meeting ministerially daily right now, and we have reminded each other several times that, no, that's something that's going to have to wait for a meeting, we are just sharing information. We do, because of boards and commissions that we sit on, have some particular areas of expertise. So somebody may come back to the three supervisors and just say, I just want to let you know what I learned at this meeting today.
And that's not a crop, that's information sharing, that's the definition.
We need to be doing that right now, so I'm glad to hear that. And we will be very careful, and we will, what you're saying is we have a, if we're doing that, which we have a need to do in this time, we have even an increased opportunity to, to step over that line. So we're going to have to be super vigilant about not stepping over that line.
Yes.
And I, I think we all understand that, but I think we all will need to help remind each other about that.
The purpose of the open meetings legislation is that the discussion, deliberation, or action happens here.
Certainly.
Not behind closed doors, not in secret, but here. But if you're sharing information, just information, that's a ministerial or societal function where you're going to be in the same place at the same time, and information may be shared. It's not a discussion.
And, and you know, the other thing I would just add in here as I'm thinking about this, is that, you know, because we said we're going to have a second regular meeting, we're calling it a special meeting, but a regular, special meeting, so, so to speak, we have two times during the week that we can come to a meeting that's already on everybody's calendars and discuss, consider, deliberate, whatever. Even if we decide that at that time we're not going to arrive at a decision, you know, we can have that discussion openly. And we also can have a special meeting, if we say we've got to just do something right now, we call a special meeting right now, we, we do what we can for access, we record it, you know, we need to think about what that's going to be, you know, for other staff, if we say we want something in five minutes, well, we may not be able to, you know, we can't do that, that's not reasonable. But I'm just saying, this is helpful to me because we will know, we can do that, we have more opportunities to do that, we can share information, we will be very careful about deliberate. Maybe I'm speaking for the group.
No, I think you're headed right, I mean, like I said, this is precedent setting, so we have the ability, all of us, staff and the board, to do it right. Set precedent, if heaven forbid we ever, somebody in the future would ever have to activate the COOCOD, ever have to face these kind of rapidly changing situations. So I have one final question about, about if we call an emergency meeting. In the unlikely event that we need to really make a decision in the next 10 minutes and the three of us are available, either electronically or in the same place, can we call that emergency meeting and record it and have one of us produce the minutes for it? Or do we need to find a fourth party?
Just talking to the auditor's office about that.
All right, I just, I just wonder if.
Yeah, I mean, if we follow the guidance.
I will continue to do the minutes, this is Lucy Martin, that's not an issue here.
Okay.
We'll, we'll fine.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you, never mind. Okay. And then now, thank you, now I'm, I'm done, we hit all the points I wanted to hit. Thank you.
Well, my one comment that would be helpful, it's just encouraging, as I said, to see very conscientious board supervisors, one through the public's business in an open and transparent way. And I think, yeah, it's encouraging and a good refresh to have these discussions.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Ethan, before you go, just since you brought it up with the new governor's proclamation, so could you just clarify what proclamation does for section 21.8?
So I was just giving it, but this is for immediate release Friday, March 20th, there's a press conference at 2:00 PM today, and this is just kind of a summary of what she's going to say, but it says, it permits public meetings and/or hearings by electronic means to a function of government while maintaining social distancing. And then, goes on further today, pursuant to IO Code 29C.66, and at the request of I, League of Cities, and numerous local governmental bodies, I temporarily suspend the regulatory provisions of IO Code 21.8, 26.12, and 414.12, or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a meeting or hearing. And it goes on to say that so long as you make, make it available wherever you are today or the telephone, that's enough.
Okay.
And again, I think there'll be more detail coming out, this is just a summary.
Sure, sure. Since you mentioned it, I just wanted to have just a little bit more detail on that, so thank you very much.
I'm just going to mention something because I just thought about that, thinking about doing meetings. The Human Services building in Ames, if, you said they have conference call capabilities, Barb? I'm thinking if we have to, if, if we get, and we're not there, but if we get from, to a work from home situation, if we get to a situation where there are major disruptions, and we maybe would, would be easier to get there. Would you think about that?
Sure.
And I, I'm creating that list, even as we've been talking today, for Barb and I are going to talk at 1:30 today, so yeah, that's a good, good thought.
Ethan, did you have anything else you'd like to add?
Note just that I'm available, county attorney, Tim Mills is available, call us up if you have any questions about concerns or, we'll shoot, we're available.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Ethan, thank you. Is there anything else on this agenda item?
We just had, I think, public, oh, on this agenda item, sorry. I think, you're referring to agenda in general, sorry. If I'm got it wrong.
This item, okay. Then we're going to public comment. Is there anybody in the room in person who wants to make a public comment? Is there, seeing no one? Is there anybody on the conference call who would like to take advantage of the situation, this time to a public comment? Hearing nobody with public comments, closed public comment session, and I would entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Haddens?
I.
Olson?
I.
Merkin, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.